We have people attending. This meeting is called to order at 7:01. Clerk Minella, can we please call the roll?
Trustee Burks.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Nattermeyer.
Here.
Posh.
Here.
Moon.
Here.
Carr.
Here.
President Carpena. Roll call complete.
Thank you. Let's all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no presentations this evening, so we will move on to the first item of business. It's disposition of previous minutes. In our board pack, we have the minutes from October 8, 2020. If everyone's had a chance to review them, may I please have a motion to approve them?
Go move in a second.
We have a motion by trustee Kennedy and a second by trustee Burks. Any discussion? Okay, let's please take a roll call vote.
Trustee Burks.
Aye.
Kennedy. Aye. Nattermeyer.
Aye.
Posh.
Aye.
Moon.
Here.
Carr.
Aye.
Motion carries and minutes are approved. On to reports of officials. The first is that of the village president. I just want to say that the recent news and data is showing that COVID cases are rising globally, nationally, and locally. This week, we saw neighboring counties take a step back in the reopen Illinois plan. This does not apply to Willow Springs. This does not apply to non-Chicago Cook County, Cook County at this time. However, it seems that these rules can change without any advance notice. As a municipality, we do not receive any advance warning of these changes. We learn of them pretty much with everyone else following the local news. So to stay informed, please do that. And as a reminder, the village uses three main modes of communication. So make sure that you're signed up for Nixol as one, also the village website and the electronic signboard. I just want to say that in the spring, when we were locked down, our major services, as a reminder, Willow Springs' major services were not interrupted. Our police and fire departments were responding as usual. Our public works remained operational. Our village hall, although close to the public, continued to process bills and permits and conducted the necessary day-to-day operations. So should we face a similar lockdown like that here in Willow Springs, that will be the same goal. No one wants one, of course, and I personally pray that there isn't one. But if there is, we know that we are prepared, much to the thanks of our fantastic staff and departments. And that concludes the president's report. So I will move on to the village administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam President. You have before you Resolution 2020-R-08. As you know, every year, we have to adopt by resolution a listing of board meetings and commission meetings for the village. I asked Clerk Minella to put the list together for us, so she put together the the resolution, and I am asking for a motion to approve it as presented.
We have a motion by trustee Moon and a second by trustee Posh. Any discussion? There being none, let's please take a roll call vote.
Trustee Burks.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Nattermeyer.
Aye.
Posh.
Aye.
Moon.
Carr.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, I'm sorry, did you? Next, I have the authorization to enter a lease agreement to purchase a new backhoe. You have before you three quotes from three different companies that Keith went out and got. Ultimately, he put a financing sheet at your desks this evening. So the recommendation is going to be to go with a lease agreement with Caterpillar. They're giving us the greatest deal on the trade-in, and the end-of-the-line cost is about $6,000 less. This is a lease-to-buy. If there's... Keith, did you want to say anything else more on this, or?
Oh, I think Caterpillar with the lease-to-buy, I mean, typical 97 cent buyout at the end of the 40s. Well, it'd be five years on the lease, but...
Yeah.
Well, they get really, really the better machine to go with, get multi-decking for the money. Their bill time is 16 to 19 weeks. But as soon as we agree on the purchases or leases from the company, they'll search all the dealers on the East Coast to hear what's got sitting on the lot. They'll go get it, bring it, put all options if they don't have it, that we want it, and hopefully deliver it before the end of the year.
Did you have one from the owner?
I had a loan from down here. Caterpillar is still going to bring out one next week, but I used Keith's loaner's. He has this machine. I use that. It's a 12-gauge machine, and it's still, I mean, a lot more power than everything that we have with our current case.
That's good. Bring you all reviews.
Yes.
Machine specifications. Do we have all those additional parts that are listed? Both down below, three or four? I have the actual sheet here, not the file sheet from that. Because I do understand what it includes. There's a four-month bucket on the cross. The quick detection couple around the rear, 24-inch digging bucket for the rear, 48-inch ditching bucket for the rear, a template snow pusher, and a thumb catch for the rear bucket. It's the option about what is included. Is that the 1.4 FBR3 IT? Yeah, I think that's something we definitely need. Yeah, it's a four-month bucket, and I think that leaves and ranks it right a lot easier than what we have. Yeah, yeah, for creating a superior standard bucket. I saw that design there.
Keith, is the snow push, that 10 inches there? Is that a puller? Are you going to pull it?
That goes on the front of the backhoe. It's a pusher that they have, like, a small parking lot and stuff that... When you get out, you can park them out within. It could be another piece of equipment or stuff. And also with the Caterpillar, they included a prime-year warranty with price. The case warranty is $6,000. That same warranty is $6,000 over the price they were.
So this is a... The other thing you got is a pull-it behind machine.
That's not a pickup truck. That's not a pickup truck. That's not a...
Call me, Steve. This is for...
Right.
So is there... Was there a motion to enter into the lease agreement?
No.
For the purchase of a new? We have a motion by trustee Burks and a second by trustee Moon. We've had a lot of discussion. Is there any further questions?
Should the motion...
I'd like to thank Keith. I know he put a lot of time into this to... He turned into trying to viable use car sales, and he did get a great price on it from where Caterpillar started.
Can't, yeah.
And he did try all of his machines, because he wanted some of them to drive the 430. He spent a lot of time with Caterpillar.
I would change. I would give him that. He wanted to out-tie it.
Definitely get the best warranty, and it's got the best history, so I'm all for that.
I'd like the motion to be a little more detailed.
So if we could say a motion to enter into the lease agreement for the purchase of a new backhoe not to exceed...
With Caterpillar?
With Caterpillar not to exceed $98,000 to give a little leeway.
Does that work?
That's sufficient.
99.
Okay. Very good. So the motion will amend it to say a motion to enter into the lease agreement for the purchase of a new Caterpillar backhoe not to exceed $99,000.
So we have a motion and a second. No, we have a motion and a second.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Burks.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Nattermeyer.
Aye.
Posh.
Aye.
Moon.
Here.
Carr.
Motion carries.
Finally, I have... Thank you, Madam President. Finally, I have our... When we walked in the door, our phone bills in the village were at somewhere north of $160,000 a year. And we've been working really hard to get those down. We had contracts with AT&amp;T that just expired this month, so all of our contracts are gone with AT&amp;T officially now. And I have, I will... I've been looking at call one. We entered into an agreement with call one to take over some of our telephone lines that were not under contract with AT&amp;T. And as a result, since 2019, we've already saved $14,000, more than $14,000 by switching to call one. Now that all of them are available, I received all the numbers. They reviewed our bills. So they actually had our actual telephone bills. They reviewed every one of them and came up with their prices on them. And at the end of the line, with the existing Posh lines that they've assumed, plus all, everything else we have in the village, our savings are going to be just under $63,000 a year. So I think I'd like to move in that direction and begin that. And it's... I'd like to do this before the next board meeting. Obviously, we can't take a vote on this tonight. Is this something that would... This type of a contract requires a board vote, does it not? Yes, I thought so. So is there... Is it appropriate to...
I can tell you to proceed.
To proceed with this and then approve this at the next board meeting? Is there an objection to doing that?
No, does this include our cell phone bills?
No, it does not. We have... What is...
Cell phones go on FirstNet.
FirstNet, thank you.
It's a first responder network that is recommended by the federal government for first responders, because it's a less full, more dedicated network. So in times of crisis, when everybody comes to the same spot, first responders can still have perfectly functioning cell phones. So we switched over to that, what, six months ago?
If I could interrupt for a moment. The people that are observing the meeting via Zoom are having difficulty hearing. If I could ask everybody to speak directly into their microphones for their benefit. Thank you.
So does AT&amp;T offer the same as our First?
FirstNet is actually kind of a division of AT&amp;T. So, yeah, nothing changed in terms of what everybody's service looked like, but it's on this alternate preferred network.
So if there's no objection to proceeding with that, and then bringing this to the November board meeting, I'd like to do that to start our savings as soon as possible. Okay, thank you. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Administrator. Thank you. Thank you, Administrator Witz. We'll move on to the village clerk, Mary Gimmell.
Thank you. So the Halloween trick-or-treating hours will be from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., and the residents should have received in their newsletter red and green signs to put in the window to indicate whether you are or are not participating in the trick-or-treating. You should assume if there is no sign that the person is not participating. I would like to ask the board members to either probably try and drop by my office the first week of November to review executive session minutes so that we can get them approved at the following November meeting. That concludes my clerk's report. We have a water commission report today, meeting today. Really, the only thing to report on from that meeting is that Engineer Lynch is going to take a look. We had a meeting with the water commission, because there's people in the area of 87th and Elm that are looking for potentially having water service. If that were to occur, we would also want to see about them having sewer service. So Engineer Lynch is going to take a look at what it would cost to put service into those areas to see if it's something that's feasible. That ends my report.
Thank you, Clerk Minella. On to the report of the village engineer, Dan Lynch.
Thank you, Madam President. And I can say we should ask something about sanitary service preliminary as I get into you and Brett.
Sounds good.
And I would also like to say that the road resurfacing program project for the year should be starting up next week, and we're looking forward to that.
Madam President?
Yes, please.
To piggyback off of that, the road program, we are sending a letter to all of the residents who live on those streets. We're pan-delivering those letters tomorrow, letting them know to prepare that they're, you know, they're about to get some new streets, but there'll be a little bit of inconvenience for a couple of days while they're resurfacing the roads. So we are going to hand-deliver a letter to all the residents that are affected by this.
Okay, good. Thank you. Village attorney Eric Peck.
Thank you, Madam President. The board's consideration this evening, there is a draft ordinance that's been number 2020-0-25, which amends Title 8, which portion specifically is your fence code. The draft that you have before you is pretty self-explanatory, but the highlights would be that you're adding to the definition of a fence, so that you're adding to it that it is a structure that's going to be more than two feet in height over existing grade. You're also revising the penalty portion in there, so you're directing it to that code section where you have fines and penalties already, and removing a specific fine from this portion of the code. You're also providing for prohibited temporary fences, defining that. And then finally, you are updating the requirements for fence posts, and that's going to be in compliance with the state code. It states that all fence posts used in the construction of a fence must be buried in the ground to a depth of not less than 36 inches if anchored in concrete and 48 inches if anchored in gravel or stone. And those are the highlights of the update. And I, or the village administrator, can take any questions if you have it.
May, Madam President?
Yes, please.
Also, there was another one in there. Our current code, which I'm told by a former mayor here that it never happened while he was there as mayor. But our code requires the village board to approve every fence permit request. And that's never happened. So we remove that, and it's approved just like any other building permit request.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2020-0-25? Motion by trustee Carr, second by trustee Kennedy. Any more discussion?
I just have one question for Brett. If I'm reading this correct, we're prohibiting any temporary fences?
No, no. We're not prohibiting any temporary fences. They're just without permit, but just... Just like, you can have a temporary fence with a permit, but not longer than six months. You can have a temporary... You know, you can't have a temporary fence located around the lot perimeter except during construction and demolition. Those specific things are... But you can have a temporary fence that is permitted as long as you have a permit for it.
Any more discussion? Questions? Okay, there being none, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Burks.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Nattermeyer.
Aye.
Posh.
Aye.
Moon.
Here.
Carr.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And there's nothing further under the legal report this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. Village treasurer Kelly Zabinski is not here this evening. We're going to skip that. On to reports of standing committees. Building and zoning committee trustee Carr.
I have no report this evening, however, our village commission approval would like to occupy some of the projects in the building. And trustee Carr. We have a couple of things going on. The 300 Building. A while back during the summer, they came to me and they have three restaurants that wanted to go in over at the 300 Building. And one of them wanted the loan name from Hogwild. But the problem was the hood, because the hood has to go to the outside and it has to go through the building. So working with the engineer Chuck Kessler and the contractors, it's finally been resolved as of this week. So hopefully, we'll be getting two or three new restaurants in that building. Also, the fire alarm for the buildings 1, 2, 3, and 4 get archery of development. That's been resolved along with the sprinkler system. So we're waiting for our permits for that to get going. Also, the clubhouse has been approved. 160 Market Street, the Teamsters are joint council because interior alterations going on, and that's going to be about 300,000 hours after putting in that one. So everything, usually at this time of year, everything starts to slow down and it's starting to come back up. And we had a slow month in October. But now, with all this, we're just waiting to see what's going to happen.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to finance and administration committee trustee Posh.
Thank you, Madam President. I have one item to note for approval is payroll and warrants dated October 22, 2020. Payroll and payroll expenses in the amount of $109,180.96. All fund expenses in the amount of $113,923.2 for total expenditure of $223,103.98. And I would like to make a motion to approve the payroll and warrants by October 27, as Brett.
We have the... We have the motion by trustee Posh and the second by trustee Moon. Discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Burks.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Nattermeyer.
Aye.
Posh.
Aye.
Moon.
Here.
Carr.
Aye.
That is my report.
Thank you, trustee Posh. License and franchise committee trustee Moon.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Moon. Strategic training, instruction, and coaching. In these 179 miles of miles across the street, I understand? Okay. And we're just trying to... This is like an operating office and studio for the gaming, instruction, and coaching. Over there. We need to come to the station. Is someone here telling me something about it?
Would you please step forward and talk directly to the top?
So basically, what we're doing is we've been working on a basement.
Closer.
Yes.
He needs to sneak into it. Yeah, it's on.
So we just look at the current office space to host the private lessons and teach your kids.
Can you state your name? I'm sorry. Anthony, and your last name, just for the record. Okay.
Anthony. Nice.
Got it. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board, Mr. Minella?
It's the 4:00 AM every day.
Not every day. So it's from 11:00 AM to 4:00 AM. When you say 4:00 AM, it's more of a... We do work from Europe and Asia. We do have tournaments that kind of go into that timeframe. It's not that every day, but we have a team that will typically play for nine to 10 hours a day. So when tournaments are going, those defensive guys are there sometimes.
What's the average amount of people that'll be in that sort of one place?
Well, right now, we have my manager and four people, maybe four divisions, four to ten.
So this will be an office and studio for gaming, instruction, and coaching. So you're going to train people how to gamble?
No, this is nothing to gamble about. This is everything from board games, chess, esports. Are you familiar with Apex Legends, console gaming, PC gaming? Nothing gambling related.
I didn't see a real sport. A 16-year-old just won $3 million playing.
That's basically what we're trying to do. The last year, we've been working hard, maybe this quarter. And we've really even put a lot of work in. And now it's time for us to go to the next step and compete with these bigger companies and brands, kind of create our own brands. I'm a little nervous. Sorry, guys.
Keep that close to your mouth, please.
You guys in the office, and then...
Well, it's me and my partner.
And your gamers are...
Well, the gamers, well, when I say gamers, it's PC gaming.
Yeah.
They're going to be with us while we train and get strategies ready for the tournaments. And I'm coming back.
How many?
Hold it closer to your mouth, please.
Kind of going along with trustee Kennedy's question, so then how many people do you expect would be in the office at one time?
Um, yeah, 20. I don't think it's going to be a lot of people, in my opinion. It's not like open for public. Everything is coming through us with written, pre-established.
And you have another operation, or is it your first?
This is how, well, I did, you could ask about coaching my country over there. A pleasant value, and that's what I got. But then I was always into like PC gaming and football relationships. Decided, we're working out, good connection, good energy. I really think we can take it to the next level.
The people, when you're coaching them, are they... So it's a mix of in-person coaching and...
It's, oh, right now, I'm in a mixture of Zoom and a mixture of in-person. I don't know.
Okay, so...
Is there any more questions from the board?
She's still with the hour.
So the concern is with the 4 o'clock time, and you've explained why. I think I'd ask for a motion to accept the permit conditioned on a 12 o'clock midnight end time. And if you require or think that you need that 4:00 AM end time, what we could do is look into whether or not our code allows that and revisit it at the next meeting. Is there a preference you have? Which one? You'd rather?
The... I'd rather it... Mostly, I don't think we're going to need it, but if we do, I think it'd be better.
What are you saying? You're saying we're singing until midnight?
So you get going.
We're not saying that we won't let it go past midnight. We're saying this evening, we're prepared to approve it up to midnight. We're not sure whether or not our code would allow it. We can look into it and revisit it at the next meeting, whether or not we allow it.
What is our liquor license?
He's not going to have a liquor license.
I understand. How late can our restaurants stay?
The restaurants can stay open to... The restaurants, the RVs, you know, I have to look it up for you, but most of the liquor licenses go to 2:00 AM.
Wait, I'm a...
But you don't plan to have liquor there?
Well, no.
No, I'm just... I'm going for the timeframe. I'm not... Yeah. So if we can go for 2:00 AM, is that fair?
The attorney, do you think that's something that we could allow?
Let's approve it conditionally, and let me review it and just make sure that it meets the requirements of the village code.
And if it does, keep in the motion. I'm sorry. No, I think it's for overseas. People that are overseas doing this.
You're saying they're playing. It's people here are children. All of your players.
Well, they're natural children, 18, 33.
Okay, so they're natural.
It could be if we...
He was talking about 12, 14.
Yeah, he's talking about...
I was just saying, we already have teenagers.
Right, no, I agree. That's why I wanted him to clarify who's playing. Who's playing?
No.
I like the motion for this, whether it's made up until midnight, and then we will look at it. I'm trying to look at it further.
Can the motion be phrased in a way that, after you've looked at it, if it's permissible under the code, that they don't have to come back for another approval?
Sure.
Yeah. Conditionally to midnight?
I'll authorize it till midnight. Let us review it, and if it meets the requirements of the village code, then we'll extend it till 4:00 AM.
Okay. That's fair.
So is there a motion to approve the license conditionally till midnight if allowed after further inquiry four AM?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have the motion by trustee Kennedy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Carr. Any more discussion, question? Okay, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Burks.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Matt Meyer.
Aye.
Pash.
Aye.
Moon.
I'm staying.
Carr.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to municipal buildings and grounds committee trustee Kennedy.
Thank you. I have no reports, thank you.
Very good. I'm sorry, Public Safety Committee, excuse me. I want to discuss first that this past Monday was the police appreciation picnic. It turned out to be a very, very special event. I think the overall spirit of the evening was one of remarkable appreciation and support. Police appreciation has been a great thing this month in so many ways. Thank you to Jan Pash and Mike Kennedy, who spearheaded it, and for all the staff and departments, board members, for their help and participation. And of course, much gratitude to our police officers who do an excellent job day in and day out. It just, I think it was a very good event, and we will continue, you know, October being police appreciation, appreciation month was great, and we will continue to show that support year-round. We have the incidents report here that she provided to us, and I will ask Chief if he has anything to add.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the month, you got eighty-six incident reports from October first till today. For the month of October, our officers issued one hundred and seventeen citations. We moved up to today to ten more video accidents. Here today for the citations, the officers have written, one thousand three hundred and fifty-four citations. Beginning of the year, so they've done an excellent job. And to just echo from what Madam Mayor, Matt Meyer said, that and I apologize to, to the mayor and the board for my apparel tonight, but I'm proudly going to show, show it off tonight because everybody from our department just truly appreciates the board's support and the community's support for police, police appreciation day and for what everybody in this department means to them. It's a, at that night, it all starts at the top, and from village administrator Brent Woods, from mayor Tarpeena, all the way down to the board, they had that support where they passed the resolution for police appreciation day. And, and Monday, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty, was the day that the men and women of Willow Springs Police Department will never forget because all of them came up and expressed their appreciation of what Jan Pash and Mike Kennedy did, the support from this board means to them, and most importantly, the support, the support they get from you as the community because many friends of mine who work for many different police agencies wish they had the support of this board, of their boards, and their community like you. And we'll never forget. And that night, the presentation was made by one of our residents, Mr. Larry Walsh, who made a flag for us, and I can show you the, the T-shirts. I don't know, we'll tell you who made it because of the fact it was a anonymous donor, but it's Willow Springs Strong, Willow Springs Police Department. And we thank the board, we thank the community for the support. And again, it means a lot. I think you'll see this that was made by Mr. Larry Walsh. He did a phenomenal job of presenting this plaque to our police department, which we're going to display proudly. I'm going to get a medallion made under it, and when it was presented, and by Mr. Walsh. So again, on behalf of the men, women, and Willow Springs Police Department, we thank each and every one of you from the board and the community for their support. And I promise you this, you know, even through the difficult times, it'll always be, be there to serve you professionally with an integrity, and I promise you that. So thank you very much.
And. And I do have to apologize. I did promise the chief I would wear mine too. And I, and I left it in my vehicle, so.
I'll be back in normal apparel next month, unless you tell me to.
Very good. Okay. We can move on to Public Works Committee trustee Burks.
Just that we can take up, we'll begin next Monday, right Keith? And then what we discussed about the traffic. Does anybody have?
No, we, we can, we can pick up. I have a full schedule for next Monday, but the police are coming out pretty fast. We started last week. The second week, do it. We do know we'll probably be out Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We have the calendar set. We're going to be at this site on Monday. That site is, you know, three days a week, we'll be out weekly. So we'll be, you know, hopefully, it's long, next weekend we're done. The panel going to start taking place, the Tuesday, Thursday, though, that we would do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any old business? New business? Public comment?
I couldn't, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for getting the tree planting ceremony for my wife last Saturday. We have like thirty-two people now, people there, people there, and I really appreciate everyone that showed up.
Was a very nice event. Did we have any public comment?
There's nothing on the board. Okay, did you want me to go through this? Okay, I'll go through. Carol Valdez, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Irene Hagen. We'll go to Kathy.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Arro. Hey, Nina Novatrick.
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. And the person on the telephone ending in eight-nine-two-nine, anything? Okay, that's it, Madam President.
All right, very good. Thanks. We have no executive session tonight, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. So we have a motion by trustee Pash and a second by trustee Moon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I propose meeting adjourned at seven forty. Happy Halloween, everybody.
Good night, everybody who attended by Zoom.